And welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting, Asuys Town Council at 9:00 AM in council chambers on Monday, April the 18th, 2016. So we'll call the meeting to order and is there an introduction of late items? Oh, do we need that on first?
Yes.
Would you like me to start again?
No, forget it.
Okay.
Yes, we have two late items.
Okay, thank you.
Asuys Water District Rates and Regulations by law, and we also have a Water Conservation and Stage Restrictions Amendment by law.
These are the two reports we've got right here.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will add those two items on and could I please have the agenda amended as shown? Thank you very much. Rhodes Campbell, all in favor. Thank you. Now, first on our agenda today was a presentation from Fortis BC, but they are not here. Therefore, we're going to skip to a delegation number two, and that would be the development plans for 4217 Lake Shore Drive, a presentation by Chris Meradian and Tyler Schmidt.
I just have some.
Absolutely, please, please go ahead.
If I may, it won't take very long.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is. So there. Chris Meradian of RLC Strategic Capital Management Corporation is scheduled to present his proposals to the council for developing 4217 Lake Shore Drive, the old par three golf course site. In January of this year, Mr. Meradian submitted his joint OCP and zoning application for amending the present tourist commercial zoning to allow mixed-use comprehensive development. Under Part IV of our Land Use Procedures, LUP by law, development applicants can make representations to council prior to first and second readings of their application. The intent is to apprise council of the developer's intentions and to obtain any feedback that could be used for improving the application process. Council has cautioned, however, that they cannot use the opportunity to make comments that would effectively tie their legislative hands in advance by pronouncing a substantive opinion on whether or not they would support approving the application. The latter considerations have to await council's careful examination of all the applicant-supporting information, input from a public hearing, and staff's recommendations. Attached are some background documents for council information, some illustrations of the developer's intentions for the site, director's proposal for a phased development application process to as much as possible minimize front-end loading on the applicant and collect information when and is when and as needed. In preliminary comments, we'll carry on to true and Neil Paget, Senior Building Inspector. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cunningham. So now we are going to have a presentation by, is it Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes, that you're going to, good. Please go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Tyler Schmidt. I'm with Schmidt Architecture. And myself and Chris Meradian and a major investor from Vancouver have a development company, and I'm here this morning to make a brief presentation of a general overview of what we would like to do and are soliciting your feedback to see if there's any major things, good or bad, that you may wish to comment on here. So I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with the site, but we're along Lake Shore Drive here, and this used to be the old mini golf course directly across from the water.
Walnut Beach.
Walnut Beach Hotel. So if I could just, what do I do? Press this button? Oh. So we've sort of split the whole site into various zones. At the very top of this bluff here, we're looking at a sort of three, three or four-story terraced townhomes that would go down, down the hill so they have views out to the lake and so on. The way the elevations work here, it wouldn't really affect any of these houses along here because it's so steep here that we would, you know, the roofs and everything would be pushed down. The other zone is single-family homes on, on small lots. We're proposing forty by seventy-foot lots. Several reasons for that. Part of it is density, part of it is, you know, being able to get more affordable homes for first-time buyers, empty nesters, what have you, so that they're clean, simple, efficient lots that can be maintained. The other two zones are, we've got commercial, we're sort of a little bit, I mean, part of this whole thing is flexibility because, as you know, the market changes, so, you know, goes from one thing to another. So we're not exactly sure about a commercial zone here, but for the purposes of this presentation, we are sort of holding that as a place card. Then we want to create a public amenity space where there's an existing sort of a pond, there's two ponds here, and the civil engineers are looking at how that can be integrated into the, into the whole site. And on this corner, we're proposing like a four-story apartment slash rental complex, which would sort of, you know, carry on with the beachfront and tie in with some of the trailer park courts and that sort of thing. So those are, that's sort of the basic zoning of it. And here's just the site plan again, so you can see the townhomes, single-family residents, apartment, commercial, amenity space, boardwalk, farmer's market type of thing. Well, it's just a proposed view looking, looking north. These are artists' conceptions that won't necessarily look exactly like this, but gives you an idea. So again, we're looking at sort of small little boutique homes, easy to maintain. Stylistically, they can, you know, we would probably be proposing some sort of design guidelines that would tie in with the, with your planning department and what the people of Asuys would like to see. But this just gives an idea of sort of the easy-to-maintain, ground-orientated, some may be duplexes, but that's sort of the single-family zone. That's just a sort of an idea of what the terrace thing would be, where sort of similar houses up there, but you'd be down low. Again, one level orientation per unit, obviously have an elevator to sort of get up and down. The parking would be underneath so that it is a nice, you know, visual community that ties in with the whole, with the whole site and the community at large. Again, the, I think this is Florida, but it's sort of desert-like. We could plant palm trees in Asuys. Anyhow, it just, you know, sort of gives you an idea of scale of a, sort of a four-story unit on the corner. And then, of course, we really want the, the whole development to integrate with the fabric of the community and to bring people into it and to use it and the public facilities around it. And so that would involve some sort of boardwalk or, you know, sitting areas, park spaces, where you can walk your dog, you can go around the lake. There may be sort of kiosks that can, you know, come up and down for farmer's markets or craft shows, those sorts of events. And that, I think, wraps it up. So myself or Chris, I don't know if Chris would like to add anything to this?
I think it's great, but we're happy to answer any questions, receive your comments. Everything is preliminary at this point, and we still are conducting market studies. No, I'm doing nothing.
He's done. Well, thank you very much. It's certainly an interesting project. I guess my first question would be, do, there's a lot of, of water over there and underground water and, and lakes, which were used, of course, as part of the golf course. My assumption is that you obviously have looked at that and you'll have to be very careful about, about building and putting in, you know, drainage and septic fields or that kind of type of thing to take care of that?
Yeah, actually, I can answer the question. We actually got civil engineers working on, on the subject matter right now with.
Excuse me, have to speak into the microphone just because we have it on granite. Yes, thanks.
Yeah, we've got civil engineers working on, on the plans right now, and they're going to be treating those two kind of man-made lakes as, as collection ponds and turning them into the parkland and everything, and they're dealing with all the water treatment and everything else. Most of it is, it all can be solved, so they've got plans for it. So that's part of the whole site servicing that is going to happen.
So we know that there will have to be, you know, public hearings and so on on this and also contacting the neighbors and, and, and of course, staff reports dealing with all the issues. Interior health, I'm sure, has to say, you know, spia, the stream protection, all of those things. So it, yeah, thank you. I'll just see if anybody else from council has a question. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Your question is, if this project did go forward, do you see yourself start to build the houses first or that condo on the corner first?
The condo project, the condo project is still, the jury's out. We don't know exactly how it's not going to work out. That probably would be one of the last phases of the development that is going to take place. The two commercial nodes are going to be the last phases. There's much further studies required for that. We're still getting feedback regarding whether they need to be rented, they need to be vacation rented, they need to be permanent residences. We understand there is a need here for affordable rental housing for some of the seniors that are on fixed income. So we're exploring those ideas, and it just requires much more thought going into it.
Counselor Rhodes.
Curious about two things. First off, does a property have, is there any access to the lake at all?
No, actually, the property doesn't have any access to the lake. Well, I've noticed, and I think Mr. Cunningham and I had a conversation about this, I don't know exactly where things are at, but there seems to be a municipal facility called Water Sprinkler, kind of a shed.
Irrigation shed.
Irrigation shed in that, in that area over there. And at one point in time, we thought maybe we can acquire, we thought that is owned by Asuys, and we thought maybe we can acquire that, that piece of property over there in order to tie in some of those homes with lake access. But, but I think it turned out that that property is not owned by, by Asuys. So we don't know exactly what it is, but we would like to see if you can create something like that.
I think it's East Bench Irrigation District.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would like to, you know, if, if anything develops in that area, it'd be very important to see what kind of plans you had in the lake area as well, because so many of those residents would be probably very keen on getting access into the water and that kind of thing. And even, you know, if you had dock plans or anything like that, it'd be interesting to see that as well.
Well, we actually did have some plans. The question is how to get access to it. I mean, we certainly would entertain the idea. We'd like to see if we can get a small marina going in that front section over there to tie it in with those homes. Certainly, it helps the project a great deal in terms of sustainability. It helps the project with access for the people who live there. And, you know, maybe we can talk to the irrigation district, maybe there's something that we can do with gaining access. So we'd like to assist us from, from the township.
Yeah, that shed that you're referring to is, is owned by the Asuys Irrigation District, and it's their pump house where they pump water to some of the residents up there. It's actually, there's a little chlorination device in there as well, and so I don't know if that would be an option, but.
I'm wondering if Water Counselor Marara knows anything more about that. Do you?
Well, the pump house they're talking about, that irrigates the whole East Bench.
Yes.
It's their main water system for irrigation.
Perhaps we don't need to move it or anything like that. Perhaps we can get access through the property, and then we can dress up that, that shed that is there to tie it in and make it look good with the development and kind of tie it in, and just providing access to the waterfront and then getting permission to build a small marina on the waterfront in order to give access to, there's going to be quite a number of residences over there. There's over two hundred-some-odd units, so that are going to be there, and it would be great if they can, I mean, everybody comes here, want to have the access to water, and it's important, and it's, it would be nice if we can do that. So we definitely would entertain that, and we don't need to actually, you know, we walked the property yesterday, and I think that building can easily be dressed up and then, you know, pedestrian walkway and tie into the waterfronts and, and maybe a marina permission to build a small marina.
Counselor Youngberg.
Thanks, Ms. Marara. There's public beach area, just a little ways down there, is if, if it ends up that they, you'll lock it while you choose.
It's, it's a little bit, it's, it's quite a bit of a distance. I mean, not enough, you can walk it, but it would be nice if we can tie that development to our little patch of waterfronts.
Yeah.
It would be quite nice, even if it's not for beach access, it's for them being able to have small water crafts that they can, you know, can use in kayaks or whatever, the small boats that they can launch.
Yeah.
Be a nice thing to do.
Anyway, it's good, lots of density there, and really glad to see you're keeping the height down.
Yes.
I was just over there working yesterday, as a matter of fact. They're all saying, what's going on here? Anyone see, somebody bought an RV?
Well, design, I mean, Tyler's done a great job on that, since we've done it in mind. We understand you go to public hearing, people are going to come and wonder, and there's a very nice development above with nice homes and everything else. And I think those three-story stacked townhomes that you see is more like we walked the entire property yesterday, and, and, you know, the, the top of the roof lines over there are going to be kind of at their, at their yard level, okay? So there's not going to be blocking anyone's view, and it kind of, you know, finishes off the bluff quite nicely. There's quite a bit of a steep slope there. So, and most of them, we are trying to do it in such a way that they got direct access, like the bottom units are going to be able to just get into the underground and, and kind of take the elevator to their units. And some of the other ones are going to have access from the back, so the top units on that little triangle piece, they're just going to be able to just drive into your garage and go into your.
From the top.
Into your unit, yes. So we're making everything totally fully accessible. That's the whole idea.
And, and I agree with Counselor Youngberg. I, I think that the fact that a lot of those people over there have, you know, have good views, and they would certainly appreciate having that kept in mind when you're building. Yeah.
Definitely. One of the, one of the major issues for us is that we have to be able to phase this project, and Mr. Cunningham and I have conversations, and it's a large-scale project, it's a number of units. We do need that density in order to deal with the, with the site and to create the community that we need to create, and part of that comes in phase, and maybe to be able to, hopefully with your assistance, to come up with kind of a comprehensive zoning document that regulates building types and dense degrees and parking, et cetera, but leaving our hands open so we can actually develop the property in multiple phases, or maybe about six or seven phases, actually servicing and development. So we kind of don't want to dig a big hole in your town and, and not be able to fill it in, so.
Absolutely. We appreciate that. Thank you. So any other questions? No. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and, and we certainly will, Director Cunningham's the right person to, to deal with because he knows all, all the things that need to be done and said and, and so on before it gets underway. So thank you very much for coming and presenting this to us.
Thank you very much, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Territory of my position.
So we will go on to the municipal ticket information, seeing as we still haven't seen anybody from Fortis. Wonder if they slept in today? It was too nice a day, they decided to stay at home. So this would be Ms. Van Veenen, please.
Thank you. So council will be considering giving adoption to Asuys Water District Rates and Regulations Amendment by law 124109, 2016, and Water Conservation and Stage Restriction Amendment by law 127301, 2016, at a regular open meeting. I know you're going to have a report after this, let me delay that a bit. These bylaws set watering restrictions for the rural land, town water systems. Municipal Ticket Information by law 1279 sets out fines associated with infractions under several town bylaws. With the adoption of these bylaws, we must now set fines to coincide with the restrictions in order to ticket violators under the bylaws. Schedule 22 is being amended to change the restrictions from normal to stage five to normal to stage four. The previous fines for fifty dollars for normal up to a thousand dollars for stage five. The fines for violating normal restrictions has been moved to the previous stage one fine of one hundred dollars, and the rest have been moved up accordingly. Schedule 19 adds the failure to obey restrictions under Section 6.2 of by law 1241. The fines proposed are the same as what is being proposed for the town violations. It is, it also changes reference to the section numbers in column two to coincide with the renumbering as proposed in Amendment by law 124109. Options that fine amounts in Schedule 19 and 22 be accepted and that MTI Amendment by law number 127909, 2016 be forwarded to the regular open meeting of May 2nd, 2016 for council consideration. Or two, that the fine amounts in Schedule 19 and 22 be changed and the new schedules be included in the MTI Amendment by law. Or three, that further review of the fines be made with a further report coming to council before consideration of MTI Amendment by law 127909, 2016. And staff recommend option one, the fines are the same as were previously set out in the stage restrictions, but have been moved up one level.
Thank you very much. It seems quite clear, even though that we haven't gone through the, the bylaws yet, but definitely the fines seem to be acceptable. Anybody like to comment on this or make a motion? Nobody wants to make a motion. We need to either do one, accept it the way it's been set up, or, or, am I correct?
Yeah, the motion would be to accept the way it's set up and move it to the next council meeting for.
May 2nd.
Yeah, May 2nd for a reading.
Okay, so that would be Counselor Rhodes, Counselor King. Any, we're okay, we're kind of slightly ahead of, of things, but this is just for the fines. Yes, go ahead.
For clarity, you say move it up, you mean like stage four up to three or four down up to five?
Well, previously, stage, the normal stage was just normal, you could water any time, and that's been eliminated. So what is now every other day or whatever you will choose at the, in the new bylaw will become the normal, and so instead of the fifty-dollar fine, it'll be a hundred, which was always four, the every other day or whatever it is that, yeah. Yeah, with the final one with watering in an emergency where there's no watering allowed, being a thousand dollars, which is where it was before.
Good. Okay. So we've moved and seconded option one. All in favor. Thank you very much. That's carried.
And, and the water councils, counselors can vote on this because it is referring to water district bylaws?
Should we take that vote again? Could we, all in favor? Thank you. I'm sorry, should have pointed that out. Thank you, Ms. Van Veenen. Okay, so we're going to go on to, I hope this is in the right order, this is business two and business three?
Yes.
Good, okay. So which one are we, Mr. Romanco, you're going to?
Yes, I'll, I'll take this, yes.
Which one are you going to deal with?
I'll do the district rates first.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the District Rates and Regulations by law 1241 and amendments. Council passed the reading of this amended by law, it's April 4th meeting. This bylaw provides for domestic watering restrictions for irrigation districts eight and nine. This bylaw was to go for adoption to council April 18th. However, the feedback received from the public caused administration to review the implementation of the days that residents could water their lawns. Feedback received illustrated that residents would have difficulty programming their sprinkler systems for watering as proposed in the bylaw amendment that received the first three readings. This proposal was for odd-numbered houses to water on odd-numbered, odd days of the calendar and even-numbered houses to water on even-numbered days of the calendar. The public recommended going to dedicated watering days for even and odd-numbered residents. The attached changed by law provides for the following watering schedule. Odd-numbered houses would water on Sunday, Wednesday, and Friday. Even-numbered houses would water on Saturday, Tuesday, and Thursday. This schedule will enable a smooth transition to level-one watering restrictions in the invent, there's a need to implement stage one twice-a-week watering. So the options that are being placed in front of the entire council today are council continues with the existing bylaw that is in council's package for adoption this afternoon. Two, council approves consideration of the following action taking, taking place in this afternoon's meeting. If council agrees to change at the Committee of the Whole meeting, administration would present a new schedule to attach to the bylaws. If council likes the changes, they pass the following resolution, that third reading of the Water District Rates and Regulations by law, Amendment by law number 1241.09, 2016, given on April 4th, 2016 be rescinded, and the Water District Rates and Regulations Amendment by law number 124.09, 2016 be read a third time as amended. The bylaws can then come back to the May 2nd meeting for final adoption. So, yeah, basically, many of the, the older sprinklers, system, the controls don't have an odd-even watering feature, and so this would make it a lot easier to implement. People would know specifically what days they could water, and then if we ever had to go to the water restrictions for stage one, we would just drop one of those days which is already noted in, in the bylaw. It would make it much easier to, to enforce and to implement.
Thank you very much. It definitely threw us all for a bit of a loop when we realized and, and the, and my neighbor up the street who looks after mine said, I think I'd have to come over and reset your, your sprinkler system once a week in order to do the odd-even. So this absolutely makes way more sense, and it would be, it would be much easier for people to program their sprinklers and, and do it this way. Water counselors, would you, are you, have anything to say about, about this? Are you okay with it?
No, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, you're right, okay. So council, or any of you, what would you, Counselor Rhodes?
So you take a motion and move it to the.
Yes.
I'll make that motion, yes. I'll second.
So that would be number two, right?
Yes.
The consideration at the, now, and so do you need to have two motions there, or is it just, is it all included in the, the third?
Yeah, just that, the motion would read this, just to move this amendment to the, this afternoon's meeting.
Good, and then it could be, it could be done today and like we were planning to.
That's right. You would, you would amend the third reading to the bylaw, reread it with this amendment, and then the actual passing of the bylaw would occur on, on the, the next meeting in May, which would be May.
May 2nd.
Not May 2nd, it would be the 16th.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have to wait until then?
No, it would be May, yeah, I'm sorry, it would be May 2nd, yes.
Okay. So Counselor Rhodes has made a motion. Is there somebody seconding it? Counselor Marara, didn't see that. Counselor Rhodes, would you like to speak to it, please?
Just for protocol purposes, on the second, it would be a good idea for the water counselors to perhaps make that motion.
If we've, we've got him seconding it, so would that make, is that okay? That's fair enough.
Specifically, I was referring to May 2nd meeting.
Okay, well, the, it would be part of the amendment, the part of the report would be that it would be brought back for final approval on May 2nd, yeah.
And at that time, you think it would be good to have the, one of the water counselors propose it? Okay, fair enough. So we have option number two, moved and seconded. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to it? All in favor of the amendments. Thank you very much. That's, and now we will go to the second report on Water Conservation and Stage Restrictions Amendment by law.
Okay, so the report is exactly the same, but the bylaw is different. This is the Towns Water Conservation and Stage Restrictions by law, Amendment by law number 1273.01, 2016. And again, the, the two bylaws will be running very similar, so I'm looking for a similar motion from council to move this, this item with the amendment to the amendment, with amendment to the amendment by law. to the amendment, with amendment to the amendment bylaw. To enable us to, or enable council to bring it in for the, the adoption, well, not the adoption, the actual changes to the bylaw, so.
So rescind the Water Conservation Stage Restrictions Amendment and read the, for a third time as amended.
What, what we're looking for is a motion just to move that particular recommendation to this afternoon's meeting.
Counselor Campbell, Counselor Youngberg, all in favor. Thank you very much.
Actually, it'd be getting fourth reading this afternoon?
No, no, it'll be, it'll be rescinding third, third reading, replacing with third reading, and then the approval will be on, on May 2nd.
May 2nd, good. So thank you very much. I believe that's the end of our agenda. So could we have someone move the adjournment of this meeting, please? Counselor Campbell, Counselor King, all in favor. Thank you very much, everyone.
Could I just ask?
Absolutely.
One of the agenda items was, was not attended.